We'll call this the order. Jen, could you roll call for us, please?
Yep.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Present.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present, all present.
Commissioner Wessel, would you like to lead us in the pledge? And a silent moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation and a country, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can she grab the agenda?
Okay, alright. So next we have approval of the agenda or any late additions. Do we have any pleasure with the agenda?
Need to approve the agenda as presented?
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Agenda approved 3-0, thank you. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This initial public comment section is for three minutes only. There'll be another opportunity at the end for five minutes. So I now would look for anyone who might have public comment to raise your hand and be recognized.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John Milliger, County Treasurer, Chairman of the Land Management Authority. Here for number 11, Housing CDVGE Program Income, Non-Program Income Fund Overview. I'd like the opportunity to talk specifically about 276 and proposal between the Land Management Authority and the county, either through a contract with the Land Bank to continue the housing initiatives, or a transfer to the Land Bank as a component unit to a restricted fund to continue the housing initiatives. So when discussing the number 11, just keep that in mind. Additionally, for number 6, reviewing the Financial Assistance Stipend Agreement Review. I don't think it's prudent to move forward right now with status quo. I think it would be constructive to look at a contractual agreement, as this is short term, and hopefully with the credit due to our finance structure, there isn't a whole lot of assistance needed because of the years of service and the training that is already completed. But my hope is that this discussion isn't before the survey results, and two, before we have an opportunity to look at a contractual agreement rather than a preview. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Great crowd, it's Elmo Tannenfield. I'm here today about the stipends. I'm asking, have you maybe considered putting this off for 60 days, do more research? I noticed there's no attachments concerning anything today, and I guess my concern is to reach out to you for stipends. What are we giving them for the block? Why isn't there a proposal? This is the hour again, this is a service for the side. This has been going on for a year now, and I never hear anything back, I've never seen anything back, what they're giving us for the stipends. Like the Commissioner mentioned here a couple of weeks ago, you want to give a stipend to another employee, that employee is here in the building during those hours, so are these employees. What I suggest is you put this on hold, take that $12,000 or whatever it is that you're going to spend between now and June, and maybe apply that to, there's other outside resources that I know the Administrator mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I don't want to use these, but like, maybe they can provide that person to help out Kathy and get this on track, so when come June, when she's done, we're not where we're at right today. We'll have a foundation, so when that new finance director comes in, he or she can take off instead of starting all over. You know, you've got to look at what's been going on here for two years, it's maybe not the people that we've been hiring, maybe it's the trainers. And some of the people we've hired, you said even Jared said it, we were set up to fail. So that means that us, the board member, which I was at that time, we set them up with the wrong trainers. And that's what you really need to look at here, is we're not moving forward, it's not the people we're looking at hiring, it's the people that are training. And why aren't they training these people to get them to succeed, to get this all getting them forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sheriff Ke- Under Sheriff Keisel.
Jen Keisel, the number sheriff. Just when you get to item number two, I want to make sure that I can hopefully be part of that discussion, we didn't become aware of that until last Wednesday, given the money apparently was already taken through that revenue sharing back in October. And obviously the sheriff has some unnecessary concerns about it, wants to make sure, given that it's a restricted type fund that we almost say, I'll maybe disallocate it or use it.
Sure, I'll ask you to come forward at that point. Any other public comment? There being none, we'll move on to Commissioner comment. Any Commissioner comment? There being none, we'll move on to our agenda. First item being the approval of the minutes.
I'd like to put these off for until our next meeting. I don't know when we got them, but I haven't read them.
I haven't had a thorough review either, I would be okay with that.
I read them, I didn't see any problem with them, but I also don't have any problems putting out their approval. I, I, we've already had action based on them, haven't we?
I think probably today would be the first.
The action was the interim plan, and the board already has approved it.
Approved it, yeah. Yeah, so that's fine.
That was the only recommendation that was in your, in your meeting, in your minutes.
Yeah, that came out of it, so I don't, I think, I think we can, that's, that's not, yeah, I think we can wait. Okay, state revenue sharing, public safety initiative, some Kathy will be coming forward to present that, and Under Sheriff Keisel, if you want to come up as well, please.
I'll just start by saying, this was already part of my packet that was going to be reviewed in number nine, but since it was added to the agenda and application at this level, we'll talk about it now. Yes, this is a new revenue sharing called public safety, and it is going to be received quarterly, well, they've got a projection of $10,000, $10,716 by next fall. The only reason I'm bringing it forward is just to let you know this is a new revenue sharing that has a safety component to it. The local public safety initiatives include, but are not limited to recruitment, retention efforts, training programs, new equipment purchases, or equipment replacements, capital improvements to public safety buildings or structures. I did reach out to some of my peers in other counties to find out if they're pointing this off because it's specified. They, because it's new, they haven't decided. I decided to ask the Treasurer's Office to help me plug that off, which we did, so we can keep track. And how the board decides to extend those funds, it's up to you, because it's your money, it's general fund money. And then, of course, the Sheriff's Association, they received an email, their peers, letting them know, and I'll let the Under Sheriff talk about what they might like to ask you to do with that money.
So Kathy is correct, we were informed about this last Wednesday, when Kathy is right on the amount, we get a bimonthly actual payment, it's according to the projection, which is just sort of $1,800 a month. And it is restricted funding, she did give the list, which we were also given, and statute says the same thing, public safety specific, or public safety initiatives. So we just, the sheriff wants to make sure that that money, you know, ends up where the legislature intended it to, and that when and if access is needed by him for certain things, that that's, that he can have that resource needed, and that it's not just used for means that wouldn't necessarily fit the criteria as it's laid out in the statute.
That's why I felt it was important to plug it off, so we can keep track. I do note, the reason that I included it in the capital upgrade overview, number nine, and I'm not pointing, I'm not paying the Sheriff's Department and the board, but there was a capital improvement item on the list going forward into the 2024 budget that has not had a yes or a no, and that was for security lighting in the parking lots.
Or cameras, I think.
Yeah, cameras, sorry. There was, that, and the other thing I thought of was the 911. We put off the whole 911 upgrade with, because of the carpeting, et cetera, is that something that could fall under that?
I couldn't answer if that would fall in the criteria. I just, number five is capital improvements to public safety buildings or structures.
Mm-hmm, I think that would qualify myself.
I would think that would probably qualify better than the cameras and the security lights of the courthouse dispatches in the Sheriff's Office building, so I tend to agree.
Yep.
So it can be just, I'm sorry, it can be just pooled until we have a certain amount that we can begin a structure?
That's why I pointed it off.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be spent within a certain timeframe, for your understanding?
Because it's new, and my peers in other counties, they are also kind of, we don't know what reporting we have to do on it yet, it's, it just came out this fall, so we're just going to keep track of it.
Till we have more information on how to adequately spend and report it?
Have you made boat payments with it?
Perhaps. See, the boat, we paid for, we just, have we got reimbursed for the boat yet?
I don't know where.
Okay, anything further on that state revenue sharing at this time? Good, Melinda?
Yeah, yep, so, and thank you for tracking that, and.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Clarification of Approved Appropriations Act Resolution. There was quite a bit of communications there, and I guess just, I was going to say there'd be Commissioner comment, but I wanted, while I, while I was on vacation, which it was needed, and I appreciate my fellow committee members, Commissioners' staff, everyone who worked hard to put some of their stuff together while I was told by a family member to try to ignore my email and my phone, a close, a close family member that will remain unnamed, but is important to me, so. Yes. I believe this item has to do with, there was ambiguities created by our, our actions at our last meeting, which, and there was some communications with Mr. Norfolk about how to resolve that, and he gave us a couple suggested motions to clean that information up, so I don't know if there's any further discussion on this at this point, or if someone would be interested in recommending that those motions be made. I guess that would have to be done at our regular meeting anyway, correct?
Right, so we would, we would advance so that the committee, or the executive committee tomorrow, yep, as a.
That was my only question, this really should be, we recommend.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's all we can, the only action we can take that we, I've reviewed that, I did read that through, and it seems to be logical, so it'd be our recommendation to move those forward and get that resolved, the clarification resolved. Is there any other, that's, I'm speaking to both the Approbations Act and the Budget Rules, both.
Okay, so I recommend to the County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget, General Appropriations Act Resolution, and the 2024 Budget Rules Resolution that were previously approved at the board meeting on November 21, 2023, as follows, as presented.
Support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried 3-0. Gets us to item number four on our agenda, potential consulting services mission associate counties, Michigan State University. Administrator Allen, would you, and, and, please. You can just, you can just scoot over, I think.
I'm just going to mention, as requested by the Finance Committee Chair, had dialogue with both the MAC and with MSU Extension, and I was actually referred to call the Extension and MSU in regards to potential training or awareness or opportunities that they may be able to offer in regards to finance and best practice and any suggestions that they may have. So Jennifer is here today as our voting representative, and she has talked with her colleagues, and they have some things that they'd like to present.
Thank you.
Good morning, thank you so much for having me. And again, just a reminder, I would not be providing that content, training, expertise. John Amrind and our other colleagues with Michigan State University Extension would likely be that, so I'm just here on his behalf, I know we have a scheduled conflict today. So he and I conversed over email, and it looked like, according to what you've submitted, Chair, that you were looking for information on finance, government, governance options and issues. And I guess I would like to just start by explaining that this probably would likely be a unique program to this board, so it would be something that would be tailored directly for you based on what you're looking for. So you, as a committee, could determine what that would look like, and as a full board could say, this is what we're looking to gain, these are the skills that we would like to achieve, these are the, this is the content we would like to see, and so likely that would be tailored for you, so it would, it would be something that would be unique to the board. The other thing I would like to say as a caveat as well, is that all of the material that would be shared would be obviously research-based and evidence-based, and it would be steeped in some sort of best practice that would likely be, you know, determined by either whoever the content trainer is, so it'd be probably, maybe John Amrind, Dr. Eric Sorsoni, has been brought into his conversation as well as Eric Walcott, who's housed in southern Michigan, would likely be content man or expertise on that. So I emailed John Amrind, and I said, hey, John, so I'm going to present for you on Tuesday, on Monday, what, what is it that you feel would be some options?
Can we, I'm sorry, can we back up just a little bit? Because I, I was trying to, and I forgot there was no attachment, so I was quickly looking for the attachment on this to come up to speed. Who, who contacted MSU to look for this?
I requested Administrator Allen contact them, just to provide options, not to take any action, but, and I, and I think most specifically, we were looking at to start with, options on structures and best practices in other counties, as far as, you know, this, yeah.
Next question, okay, structure and best, best practices.
That's our first, I think, order of business, because that, that is the implication of long-term plan, which I know, I think, we have like three options, basically, we have the, the option that we operated under before, which was administrator with a finance director reporting to the administrator. We had the CFO option, where we have two direct reports, and then there's a kind of a hybrid option that I understand is a CFO slash administrator with a accounting position underneath it. And so that's, I think, our first order of business, that we'd be looking for some guidance, suggestions, and thoughts on the best.
Okay.
You know, pluses and minuses on those things, and that actually, I guess, is to answer your question, and I think yours as well, is what the first order of business would be looking for, for help.
Thank you.
Okay, good, sorry about that, I didn't mean just to railroad him.
No.
So what, what John had indicated, he talked about first about facilitating a conversation, so it would be bringing together the key members of who you identify and do some, you know, planning in and around that, so bringing a group together and utilizing like a train facilitator, and that could be someone like Bethany Frye Bookie, who's housed in Towacca County, to help facilitate that conversation. She, he also mentioned doing some refresher research into the different powers of the board and other elected officials, and shared what he has learned. He also talked about sharing best practices from other counties that have been through a similar change, so kind of going through some of our tools and resources and saying what other counties have been through a similar change, and kind of how they have, how they handle that as well. And then I went to Eric Sorsoni's website, because I know that he has a center on public policy, and these are some things that he does. And again, I know he's been part of these conversations, but he can provide educational workshops and training on best practices related to fiscal sustainability and working towards some of those processes. He can also talk about workshops and partnership model projections to talk about the adoption of data, so those are things that he can do as well. And then I revisited a couple of John Amrind's news articles on good governance, and he has developed curriculum in and around that, and fiscal sustainability, and how to organize oneself is something that he's talked about in his articles. So those are different content matters that he could bring. So again, it would just be, if he gave us specific direction on what you're looking for, I could tie into those, I would just report back to John and Eric and see what you would like to suggest, but it would likely be tailored for what your content would be.
What would be the process to pursue, I mean, is there a financial commitment here on our end, or is this, is this a service available to us?
Right, so because of your relationship with us, each year we talk about that relationship, and so yes, that would be something that we would provide. If you're looking for something that would be like monthly for a long period of time, there might be some travel costs associated with bringing folks in from southern parts of the state, but if we're talking John, John Amrind or Bethany Frye Bookie, or some of our local educators, no, that's included in the relationship that we have.
Could we maybe schedule our January meeting around John's calendar, so that he could join us at that time?
Sure, I think that, you know.
Finance Committee meeting?
Finance Committee, and again, I think, you know, to prepare for that meeting, it would just be the initial discussions, it would be directly related to structures and some of that information you mentioned about most people going through the same process we have, I think that would be invaluable to us going forward, so.
I'm just making some notes, so. Okay, and I can have John, I can have John coordinate his calendar, would that be the best way to do that, for that Finance Committee meeting, or what's the best way?
Uh.
I can take a look at John's calendar at any time, and so that's something that.
Do you want to, do you want to look at the dates right now? I mean, it's, the next meeting has to come up at some point, so. And if you have access to his calendar.
I do, let me just open up my Outlook here, just a second. Kathy, do you have your calendar in front of you?
I do. The one thing that I'll caution is just with payroll, and you're looking at January is the worst month for the accounting services. So right now, with, with your discussion later, it is two people to do the work for, if this stops December 31st, or whatever you're looking at, so that is critical to how Kathy's going to proceed in January. So I would suggest maybe not on Monday or Tuesday, in case it falls into an executive, Jen, or payroll, maybe on Wednesday or Thursday meeting, if that's available. And again, you also have your organizational, the first Tuesday in January, your executive is the second, and the third is your regular session. So you have three meetings that they're not already on your calendar in January.
Yes, second is organizational, correct?
Yes.
How about the fourth or fifth of that week?
I'm just scrolling through all the staff that I can see their calendars to find John's there, and it's, okay.
Because how does that look on you?
I think I'm okay right now.
Because I, I have a, I've had a change of plans that takes me out, actually, of like the next eight days or so.
So you're suggesting the fourth or the fifth?
If that works for you.
Works for me.
So what time would you be saying on the fourth or the fifth?
I think we'd be open to John's calendar. I have the whole day, does that, does that look available to you? And that gets you out of your payroll crunch time, yeah?
It looks like on the fourth, he's in Cadillac working with the nonprofit network, and then seeing that he's off on Friday, so I don't know if those two days would work for him. He's dropped down to half-time these days, so he's kind of in a pre-retirement mode, so.
Then I would go to either the third or the eighth. Is Wednesday, like, at least a little better than Monday, Tuesday, for the, for you, Kathy?
Well, the eighth is.
Eighth is Monday again, yeah.
It's Monday, you have executive, Tuesday, it is not payroll Monday, I mean, correct.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess the second or third, we could do it right after the organizational committee, if, meeting, if that.
This is a possibility.
On the second?
Oh, we're talking, I'm sorry, are we on the eighth?
No, the eighth, I guess is Monday, I had, that gets back into a bad day for.
The second is a holiday for us, so.
How about, how about the third?
I'm seeing that John's in the Grand Treasurer's Office, that it's, that likely is an option, so what time are you thinking?
What's availability of anyone else? I can make a.
I think I'm open. I shouldn't count.
Kathy, any preference? Morning, morning or afternoon, late, you want to do like a 2:30 in the afternoon on the third, does that work for you, Ty?
I will confirm this, this is following the meeting, I will let Jeff know that there's, if there's any other sort of something that I don't know about that's not on his calendar, but I'm certain he will. So just to clarify, you're looking for conversation on structure and the different options you're entertaining, and these sort of content around different counties that have gone through a similar process?
Similar transition, yes. So we kind of jumped ahead to item 14 on our agenda a little bit here, but we'll, we'll hold that as a.
And Jen, just a heads up, if you would also apply Kathy with that, I know you're going to do it with, oh, Jeff, if, if there's no, if he's not available, yes. Kathy does the agenda for me. Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay. Anything else for me?
I don't think so at this time.
Well, thank you for inviting us to be part of your evolution.
Thank you for your time. Next on the agenda, we have Finance Department Organizational Clarification Job Postings.
Do you want me to get off speed?
Sure.
Okay. I, it's not necessarily about the job descriptions, those were added, I didn't have those to my packet, so it's not about the job descriptions for me, it's just about the posting, getting these jobs on the internet, so inserting applicants, especially for account work. And so, I know with the changes of the 2024 budget, and we had some retirement notifications, like your planning and community development director, that is on the job posting schedule right now, it is at 23 wages, but we budget it for the 24 salary. Sheriff's Office Administrative Secretary is posted at the 24 rates, that's been posted. The Executive Assistant is posted at an hourly rate, 23 rate, it's budgeted salary. So, you know, this is about more about getting it posted and what range we're looking at, so we can start getting some applicants.
So I, I took a look at the job descriptions too, and to move forward a little bit, I mean, some of them do need a little bit of fine tuning, even if they're temporary, because I mean, if you look right away at Account Clerk, it says supervised by the County Clerk and Chief Deputy Clerk. Yeah, there just, yeah, there need to be some brush up all the way through, both that and the, and the, the Finance Director, of course, for the intermediate plan is, is not supervised by administrators, by the Board of Commissioners Finance Committee, so I don't know who we could ask to go through and clean that up, is that, and HR, Darcy, could we ask you to look through that, give us a suggested things as far as getting these positions posted?
It seems like, it seems like HR ought to do that, and also come back with the, with the recommended wage.
Yeah. Is that something that we could ask you to work on as well, recommendation along with the.
Need to make a recommendation, yeah?
Yep. So I want to formalize that recommendation, and how about the, the, a little bit, I guess, I got to reflect a little bit, we, we would be looking for two account clerks, because we.
May put down two?
We, we would be, one would be, what would be a potential replacement for the second position of a Deputy Finance Director, we're going to call it at this time, because we don't know how that works out, but I think it was the intent of this board to actually advertise for two account clerks. One of them, unless, I guess we haven't investigated, and we don't think there is capacity in existing staff to, to provide assistance, have we, have we verified that? Because that was our, that was our interim plan. You had, you had one clerk.
I was hoping to get one account clerk at this time.
Okay.
Just because I need to get somebody going, training. But that is going to be a position that goes forward.
Right. Yeah, either.
Short term and long term. That is something that goes forward.
What is, what is the thoughts? Is that what you'd like to see proceeding?
Definitely. Definitely. Need to advertise for that position as soon as possible.
And the sooner the better.
Yep.
I agree. Is that the urgency of that such that we would want to do something prior to the January meeting or what's the?
I, I don't, I don't think we, if not a board function, we've approved the position.
Right.
Now I think we have the HR and the finance director and whoever else is going to be a part of the interview team.
Everything else she proved has been posted.
Okay.
Except the account clerk and the finance and then the election manager is still needing to be posted.
Well, I think we'd want to get this posted. I agree with, with both other members of committee. Darcy, you had.
I'm very happy to get this posted today. I just was looking for clarification because I know there's been the discussion of are we bringing in someone temporary, are we bringing in two positions, are we bringing in one?
This, yeah, so this would now be a, a full-time permanent position.
I'll get posted today.
And Commissioner Wessel, you mentioned something about how, how we're going to handle interviews for that. Do you have a suggestion in that vein or?
Seems like the finance director and the HR and, and maybe a representative from the finance committee would be a part of that interview team. I think we need to make sure that we move forward fast with this. And, and since we have finance reporting directly to the board, it makes sense to me that a board member serves on that interview.
Would you be willing to serve in that capacity?
I would, no offense. I think someone with a strong finance background, unless you don't care because I don't want your formal resume shared. But I think someone, my preference would be either a member here and asked me, but or my question by the chief deputy clerk or the clerk. They've been interviewing entire county clerks.
Successfully.
Well, I, I feel comfortable interviewing clerk, clerk candidates. I've been director of financial aid for a university. I've managed school budgets. I've worked with the county budget for 10 years. I think I can interview a clerk.
I have no problem, Ty, but I, I agree, we can do both. So, so either the, either the clerk or deputy clerk, Ty, yourself and HR. We've done that a lot. Chet did that a lot with large interview teams or boards.
It'd be my opinion that this is just one commissioner speaking that inasmuch as we're trying to move forward with a independent committee, that we would best be served by starting off on that foot. That doesn't mean that, you know, Kathy can't reach out in whatever way she feels she want to, but I would think that, this is just my opinion, that that interview committee should be representative here. If Ty is willing to do that, Kathy and, and HR, that would be my preference. I don't know if we're going to make recommendations or any other discussion or thoughts on that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I was just going based on history. I mean, we've got.
And I understand that.
30 years of financial county finance. It just kind of makes sense, but.
Is there a motion to be made there or is that just, do we just make that recommendation?
You know, I, I guess I'm, as I'm thinking of it, I don't think that we need to be exclusionary either. So if, if, if our finance director believes it would be important to have Jen there, I don't, I'm not, I'm, I could support that. I just think a board member needs to be on that because it is reporting directly to the board.
I have no problem with that.
What?
I have no problem with that. I think that's a fine plan.
So if.
So just, was a motion just to, to move forward with the account clerk posting and interviews, et cetera? What are you looking for, for a motion?
Oh, yeah, we're looking for a, to, to, when, actually, I don't know that we've already approved this position. We approved the plan. I think the only thing that we would need a motion on is actually who consists of the interview committee because I think we have enough actions taken to post that job immediately right now, right? Is it, I think that consensus is there and Darcy can work with Kathy real quickly to put that posting in, make sure it meets both requirements. So I think, only thing I need a motion on is I guess the, the composition of the interview committee.
So I would move to approve to the board commissioners that the interview committee consists of finance, interim finance director, HR, Ty Wessel, and Jen Zwicki.
Good work.
Is there any discussion? All of those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Motion carried three zero. And, and backing up, just remember you're, you're going to clean up these job descriptions in the appropriate manners. Any other, Kathy, anything else other in this department organizational job postings that we need to give you direction on?
No, I, I, it does help me a great deal to have some clarity in that the finance department interim finance director will be reporting to the board. My staff is my staff and we're going to move forward and find the sound and comfort.
Hopefully, hopefully.
I think that's the plan.
When, when we revise the finance director position, I, it's, it's new for us to have two direct reports for the board. And even though we have two direct reports, I think we have an expectation that our two direct reports are working together. So I think how we do this job description and help clarify not only our interim finance directors responsibility, but where does our administrator fit into that process? Because I, I think we want to move forward without any surprises on either way. And obviously, our administrator prepares the agendas for our board meetings. We don't want surprises at board meetings. So I just think we ought to in some way recognize that direct reports still report to each other and work with, work with each other as well.
Yeah, I think that's just an act of professional movement between, that's an act of professional operation between the people that are performing those tasks.
Right.
I certainly wouldn't want to be surprised and I don't want to surprise the administrator either, so.
So like agenda items?
Coordination with each other so that, you know, she's got information that I, she's willing to answer, which she does.
Aye.
As a person.
Yeah, especially since this is right now just a temporary position.
We're in the short term.
We're in the short term and, you know, it'd be unfair for Administrator Allen to have to come into it all of a sudden again and not having been in any of the information loop in the meantime. So we would hope and encourage that. Agenda items, anything to do with the finance committee would be shared. Again, doesn't change the supervision. The thing difference between being in charge and being informed. So we will hope that everyone is informed there. And I guess while we're on that subject, and I'd like to, I guess it's not on the agenda item, but I think that we would like to make sure that both the treasurer and the administrator is present for these finance council meetings. That's not an agenda item, but I, I think, and, and the idea that we're trying to move forward with this team effort to get this done and figure out how to get it done, I would like to see that recommendation be made as well.
Agreed.
And I don't know if we need any, any direction other than that official, just make sure you guys are here and in the loop and ready and willing to give your advice.
Or, or answer questions that I don't have on top of my head.
Correct, yeah.
Do they have information that you want?
As, as a direct aid to you as well.
As finance process goes to then, Kathy, you will create the agenda for finance committee meetings so that we make sure we're covering everything we need to cover.
If you can give me that direction, this, this agenda was a bit of a hot block.
Yeah.
And that's okay because this is all new and it's a short term. So I brought what I felt needed to be addressed. I think Chairman Wessel and Administrator Allen met and they added a few things, which is fine. I don't want these meetings to go on for four hours because I have this one luxury I don't have in my role right now is a lot of extra time, so.
I assume we would review them together too. Much appreciate you not taking, taking that off my plate while I was gone, so.
So as far as committee structure goes, so then you also would have to coordinate with via minutes or administrator for whatever comes out of personnel committee that has a financial repercussion has to come then to us. So that ought to also be on our agenda.
And that's a good point and talking about this committee structure, and I mentioned this to Chairman Wessel the other day, is that this is new for me. I've been with county government for, you know, a good number of years now. There are committees like advisory committee to senior services or the parks and rec. This committee structure of the board is a bit new for me. So I am kind of going to need to understand how this works and make sure it works for you and the administrator and the county and the executive, correct? But the timing of these meetings, especially during the last few meetings where this committee's going to need and keep things to executive and then executive to regular, then this one would, it would help if it wasn't the day before. I know we accommodated schedules. So a week before would be a representation. Then your personnel.
Should be meeting right.
After regular, but before this one.
That's right.
So that if personnel decides they have something that has a financial component, it kicks here and then we have time to kick to executive. Does this track?
That makes sense. That's one of the things we discussed at length is keeping the integrity of the committee structure and the integrity depends entirely on making recommendations to executive, executive going to, to regular meeting and having time to digest that information in between, so.
It, it's a very good, once you get the rhythm of it, it's a very good structure. I, I worked under it before where we had three, three committees. One met the first week, one met the second week, and anything financially came to finance on the third week and it went to executive and then to the full board. So it was plenty of time to, to do your homework, follow up on anything that you thought wanted to follow up on, get any more information, and mainly keep public fully informed of what was going on. So it's a good, it's a good structure once you get the rhythm of it. We just got to get this rhythm figured out.
Maybe at our organizational meeting, we can talk about meeting dates and structure at, at that time, so.
And I could, I, I understand that there is a personnel committee meeting this week, Wednesday. I'm not sure of the agenda of that, so I, I don't know if they've announced anything about that or I, I understand you can answer that.
Yeah, well, I guess we.
I haven't seen the agenda, but every time the personnel committee meets or this committee meets doesn't mean we're going to spend money.
Right.
Right.
And I, and I think, I think there, in the organizational meeting, let's plan our schedule of, of, of board committee meetings so that it's kind of regular schedule.
Any further discussion on that item? An hour item down to item number six on our agenda, financial assistance stipend agreement review. County clerk, chief deputy clerk, there's no handout. Actually, I'm not, I have no awareness of what the agreement consists of at this time and how it was done because I wasn't here and I've not seen any paperwork that. And I actually didn't ask for this to be placed, so I guess Kathy, was this your request or?
Well, we're going to kind of go through a history, starting with December 22nd of '22. This was when we had the resignation of John Prince. I was picked as interim at that time and Administrator Allen asked for temporary end of year and not support to move to finance staff. And this is where the stipend recommendation started. And it basically was renewed in June to get us through the rest of this year. So it continued and knowing that not much has changed with regard to the level of work and responsibilities that I inherited a year ago and knowing that I have year end to finish and the transition into 2024, the workload and taking on an inexperienced and hopefully has government experience background account clerk, the training of that person during a very intense period of time to get ready for audit, which is that I was able to speak with the chairman regarding the calendar that they have set for all their contracts for '24 and we are set up in March. And we are also, you know, you're in your short-term plan, your long-term plan is to bring in a finance director. We heard from Mr. Peacock that this could take us a while because the individual effect that you're looking for is going to be a uniform, as he said. I had great hopes for Sean Kama. I clearly thought that he was what the firm needed. I don't think it's the position that he was hired to do is what he wanted. But the mechanism of county government, accounting and finance is pretty rote. It's very cyclical. I think it's important that the finance director understands the mechanism and can take over because if I go down, if I'm assistant again or, you know, your structure, the finance director does have to have a learning knowledge and be able to do the job of his staff or her staff. So I'm recommending because of the amount of work that's coming up, we don't know how long it will take you to find your finance director. I recommend that studies continue. It's 10 hours a week of chief deputy clerk and 10 hours a week of the county clerk. This, their role, it might not be evident to you, but because we have dual controls in place with all things that we do, all the review that has to happen, this, I am not acting autonomously as your interim finance director. I have to have these dual controls in place and this assures that the work is being verified and checked so that nothing goes on with this department without the dual controls that are put in place for years to ensure that county's finances are in shape and that we're following our budgets and rules and the intellectual knowledge, the institutional knowledge that they continue to provide me is invaluable to me. So my recommendation is that it continue. If not, for a year, at least six months. And the original agreement lasts until the finance director is named.
Any discussion?
Um, well, my thought is, I gave this a lot of thought over the weekend, looking at, at where we are and, and, and I kind of think I know where we want to be. So, excuse me. I, I, I'm just very frustrated that I feel like, and Kathy touched on it, you know, we, we thought we were in a good place, but I just really feel like we've wasted an entire year on this process and we haven't gotten to where we want to be yet, even though we kind of know where we want to be. So as far as kicking around other ideas, we heard the, the prospect of contracting out. Honestly, we, this is the cheapest route that, that we can go. And you have to consider too that there's the, all the knowledge, as Kathy just said, all the institutional knowledge is there. This is two people that are doing this now that can, I mean, like hit the road running, they're already running, already on the road. So I, while I wish we were further down the road on, on our, this whole structure, while I wish we were further, until we have, we have a plan, but until we see how that goes, I, I really don't see any other option except for, to continue the stipends. If you want to put a timeframe on them of six months or revisit that in six months and we, you know, at that point would be super happy with where we are in the process and, and something to roll off, I, that makes a lot of sense to me. But in the meantime, I know this is a busy time of year and I, and I've watched the, I've watched the hours that go. a busy time of year and I've watched the, I've watched the hours that go into audit. And honestly, if I watch the hours that, that they're putting into our finances, we have a big budget here in Leona County, and I just think it's super important that we continue on smoothly. So I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners to continue the stipend arrangement with the chief deputy clerk and the county clerk at 10 hours a week each.
I think before we go to a motion, we'll just continue the discussion for a bit. If you were about to.
Oh, certainly.
Yeah. Because I mean, I think other people who want to, will want to speak on this.
Yes.
Well, I don't want to speak on it.
Yeah, I don't think anyone wants to.
I, I don't like stipends. I, I understand what Kathy's saying. I understand how critical it is that we have the support of our clerk and our chief deputy clerk to make this work. I understand that. I think stipends in this building has been an issue across the board with staff and created real problems with our staff. I've heard it from lots and lots of people that we expect teamwork and now sometimes we, we have to do stipends to make it work. But I, I also want finances to work. And I understand that we're in a bind. I think if we would have done it different two years ago and planned the process, we wouldn't be here right now. But this is where we are. I'm hoping that when we get the account clerk in, that some of the stipend might go away because that takes care of some of the work. So right now we're down two positions and we pay two stipends. And when we fill up the, when we fill and get the new account clerk so she can or he can take some of the load, then one of those stipends might go away. And then the second stipend goes away when we get our permanent finance director. I, I will support that because we have to make this work. But at the same time, I'd like the board to consider a motion at some point to say, we will never, ever, ever, ever again even have the word stipend on a board agenda because they are problematic.
I agree.
So I would like, rather than I think the motion that Melinda was going to make, suggest that we see if we might talk about a structure where two stipends now, tell that account clerk and get that person going for a couple of weeks and then one of those stipends goes away, keep the other stipend in place until we know we've got a permanent structure in place.
So I'm, I am not a fan of stipends either. I think we either have to structure ourselves to, you know, work as a team and find workloads that make sense. And I would, I would prefer to see no stipends. Unfortunately, I do, you know, I do believe we're, I kind of concur with Commissioner Wessel on this. I would love to see just none, if you ask me my preference. And I support wholeheartedly a, a, a motion that, by the board at its regular meeting to say this, when this ends, that's the end of it. Because I do believe it pollutes the wage structure, it creates discomfort among staff. But we are where we are. So I would, I would, I would agree, I would like to see a motion made, similar to what Commissioner Wessel has proposed. And I don't want to put a timeframe on it other than it ends as soon as we can get someone, you know, first stipend ends as soon as we get someone hired in some reasonable amount, two weeks or something of training. And, and then, you know, the next one ends as soon as we can get it done, when we get someone in place. So that's.
I see where you're going. I don't think we can put that time limit on as a thing. I think it's, a lot is going to depend on how it goes. A lot's going to depend on how comfortable Kathy is with the new account clerk. As she said, if we get someone with government experience and they can hit the ground running and Kathy can go home one, two, or three days a week before eight o'clock at night, that, that'd be great, you know? Be great if, if our other employees' families would actually see them at some point in the evening and not on the weekends. But right now, we don't have that. So I, I don't think we can put that timeframe on there. As lovely as that would be. I also am right on board with the stipends. And interestingly enough, as far, you know, not hearing a lot of complaints about it. So certainly not in the courthouse about stipends being paid. Very interesting.
Well.
Well, do we have Kathy react to what I had?
Sure.
What I said?
I was reflecting on Administrator John's original proposal from a year ago, which was to continue this support through hiring a finance director. And I had posed a conversation with my, who I helped was my boss, Sean Cumming, and he agreed that the assistance of the clerk and the chief deputy clerk should continue even under his training time because he was observing a lot of information and needed to have that down the hall, get that information, let's talk about it, bring in the treasurer if you want to ask a question there, bring in, you know, whatever. But even he felt that this was valuable to training this new department that was coming in. So it is available right down the hall. If there is a problem with stipends, I can tell you, I've sat in an elected chair, just like you. And I know you want to say you never, ever want to see these on these agendas again, where you can't bind future boards, you don't know what they're going to do. So I, you know, that statement.
Right.
I appreciate the emotion behind it, but if actually you're not going to be able to bind future boards with a statement like that. So, and no disrespect. I can tell you, I, the nature of this work, what we're coming into the next four months, and we're down a staff member in the treasurer's office to run this period of time. So it's going to be a coordinated effort to get us ready for the audit. I will not take the image of people. I just cannot. And so to ask people to assist me if they're not being compensated to do so, it's just not in my low house. I will not take the image of people.
So I would offer a compromise thought that we would follow somewhere in between these two points and have a limited time, very limited time definite, and then review them. And so I personally cannot support anything that would go past the first quarter of next year for stipends. I believe we should have the things in place. We have an eminently qualified person standing right in front of us who has shown her expertise to us in the past. And we are trying to move towards an independent finance department. And if we don't take the steps to do that at some point, we're never going to do it. We're going to try to do it cooperatively, but that, that is, but I, this is just one commissioner. That's all that I can support. So I'm only one member on this, on this committee.
I would, I would support that. And in three months, who knows, we'll be back here. Maybe we'll have our whole plan for where we want to go with a longtime finance person. Maybe our new clerk will be outstanding. And I, I like that, I like saying, let's approve stipends for a quarter and then see where we are. But you hear what.
That gets us, that gets us through the audit. So.
I, I, so, you know, to, to review April 30, 2024 is, is fine. I, because I'm very hopeful.
It'll be March 30, 2024. The first quarter will end at the end of March. January, February, March.
We will only be just beginning our audit at that time.
Your audit prep should be mostly done by then. If you have an auditor coming in three weeks later, you can't tell me that the audit isn't going to be done till three days before.
Does John want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Or Kathy?
John, do you think you'd like to?
No, I meant that there's an extension, correct? The plan is to extend the audit until after they're here on site, right?
I'm hopeful that there's an allegation. I have no further commitment made by anybody.
I, I just sent an email to him last week after talking with Paul Watts. And because of the leave in the treasurer's office, he has agreed with a, a list of items that would have to be brought to the auditor's attention upon return of the employee in the treasurer's office, that they will not audit those until that return comes in. His auditors told they have time. So they're going to be here in the week of March 11, I believe. March 11. And I'm not sure of the leave structure, but they said they'll work with us on extending the audit through return. And then we do have ongoing things that happen in April, May to get ready for the submission of the, of 65?
Of 65.
Of 65 with the state of Michigan.
Of 65, excuse me.
So I think that's due in June. That's a June guy. So we're trying to work with this. The auditors understand this happens in counties where you have a leave, it can be planned or unexpected. They just like to be told ahead. And we're very, I'm at a.
So you want, you have to review this in March then, if that's what you're going to do at executive in March?
What'd you say?
You'd want to review it in March, at your executive in March, then regarding your stipends. If you're going to go through the first quarter, you're going to review it before the audit.
I just think the first quarter is just insane personally. But I mean, it's, you can review it every month as far as that goes. But I.
Yeah, I mean.
I'd have preferred six, just because I, I just can't imagine. I'd love to believe we got our finance director on, on board, but just certainly as you review, if at some point we get a good account clerk, they're, they're hitting the road running, they're, we're happy with their knowledge of the work, one may roll off.
You say, you say six and you say three, four would get us through the audit prep, for sure.
That's correct.
And, and that might be a good compromise if you were willing to do that. But I don't want any, any promises beyond that as one member of this committee because I, I think the goal of this to be, we have to cut ourselves loose. And if we're not ready to do that in four months, something's, something's wrong with our organization. I mean, we've got the wrong plan if we can't do it in that time.
You don't have a body.
What?
You don't have a body.
Yes.
But if we, if we need more bodies, then let's get bodies.
Let's get bodies.
We have a finance director, assistant finance director, chief.
We have a, we have a position that, that we already approved that we can fill if we need to. So I would think that in four, four months, we would be able to know what we're going to do.
You don't know your structure.
And I would ask you to consider maybe additional staff as an option to stipends. I mean, previously you'd said you only needed one.
I have, I have a clerk.
Yeah.
And even have another count clerk.
Yeah.
If you want to hire an assistant finance director, I'm currently holding that position. It's the board.
Yeah.
On your, and I merely not apply for finance director. I'm not sure.
I'm just one member of the board. I, I'd like to still stick to the three. But if the four is a compromise, but I, I think we review it at every single finance committee meeting and see where we're at. I won't even be comfortable guaranteeing the four if we can get where we need to get. That's just my position.
And I agree with, I think Commissioner Lotner said this is probably the least expensive route we can go right now.
Did you hear that?
This is the least expensive route we can go if you have assistance. And they can also help train. If we get these people and I have to be, you know, disposed doing something else, if we just have somebody sit with them on data entry and watch it, then we've got people. But taking them off their daily routine means that they go into the evening to get their things done, they have to do. And I know you're saying, you're hearing that people are upset with this. I personally, nobody talks to me, so it doesn't matter to me. But they're not staying here until six, seven, eight o'clock at night. They got their bags and they're out the door at five o'clock. So if they want to come in and help and do it for free, I'd be happy to have somebody come on in and we'll sit together and I can make them a pile of work.
So I think it's been discussed.
I would not be volunteering for that.
Discuss enough. I just, I'd be looking for a motion. I can tell you, I will not support a motion for six months.
Oh, for six months?
I will not support that.
You will not support. Okay, very well said. Okay, so I will try again. I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners to continue the stipends at 10 hours a week for the chief deputy clerk, 10 hours a week for the county clerk, to be reviewed after, on April 30th, to be reviewed before April 30th, 2024. Or after, whatever, roundabout, I don't know how to word that.
I think, what I'm trying to say is that you'll, you agree with the statements.
Through.
Through.
Through April 30th, 2024. And should be reviewed.
I'm going to support it, but then I want to speak to why I have a problem with the motion and see if we can clear.
Sure.
Clear it up some because we've been, we've approved these a few different times and there's always the expectation, of course, they're going to continue. And as I look at what this motion sounds like, we're going to review it in April. And then we'll be right back here. And I think it's got to be a stronger.
Okay. So you just take the word review out? Is that what you're looking for?
We will, we will approve it.
Through them, through April 30th.
And expect that we're able to do it without a stipend after.
Okay. That's, that's fine. Yep. So through April 30th, 2024.
I guess I would offer just a slight amendment to that, that it can be reviewed and terminated prior to that if conditions.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to add that. You can do that anytime as executive.
Yep.
Just come back to finance. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's in the original agreement.
As long as it's stated in the minutes that that's my position.
You can come forward and add that to an executive session anytime you want.
Okay.
So we have a motion and we have support. Is there any further, I guess before I agree 100% with Commissioner Wessel's position, at some point we have to say we're going to have a finance department that lives apart. And so I, it'd be my intention that I, it'd be hard to convince me to renew. So, but we have, we have to get, we have to get done now. So.
And my hope would be that at, at some point when we get a new account clerk and maybe an assistant finance director, at least one of those stipends goes away earlier.
That's good.
And, and so I think we ought to be real open enough.
Agreed. So I guess we have a motion and support and we have any further discussion? Then I guess we have a vote. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Did I only hear one aye?
No, I was an aye. I'm sorry. Not that loud.
Motion carried three aye.
I said it softly because I wasn't enthusiastic for your support.
Just so safe, reluctantly.
Information Technology Director Technician Transition Non-Union Wage Scale.
This is, I guess I'm looking for some certification here because we, in the budget, the 2024 budget, you approve the, the operational budget to pay an IT director. And they, it's posted. So, you know, if there's going to be a posting, to me, that means we might have an overlap. If there's an IT director hired that is not our IT technician. And then, so I don't believe there was an approval financially to approve an overlap if that happens.
Can we call on Darcy? Because my, it was my. Because my, it was my understanding that we approved it. We approved it with our current employee and we budgeted for it.
I know that you were not a fan of that, but I, that was, that was what I thought we did. So I think we need to review the minutes.
It is posted? It is posted for January first? And your current employee is live?
So I guess, I mean, obviously we've never not done that if that situation existed where there needed to be overlap. So let's deal with it if we have to. Is that, I mean, is there any reason to take it?
Yeah, you may have to if it's set at the same date. It was set by last December. What Kathy's referring to is your staffing level says an IT director and you currently have an IT technician. So let's say if there's interviews and other people that apply and that position's not in there, you don't have an IT position in your staffing level. The, the position of IT ends December thirty-first, the technician. So I'm assuming HR is working towards a one-on-one director. But that's what I'm saying is that the staffing level says director. And so Kathy was bringing the attention to that as well as the non-staffing, non-union wage schedule is the wages that she was going to discuss.
So, I mean, would you, I mean, would the
You can make that, you can look to that recommendation if you need to on, if Darcy comes back to you at the, the last meeting of the month in December.
Yeah, we have one, like twenty-seventh, usually.
I'm not sure if it's been scheduled yet. We've got three signatures, but it's usually the last week, just before the first of the year. If we can get that into pay bills, it's very helpful.
So is that posted internally and externally? Like trade?
Posted internally and then on the website.
Anything further on that, Kathy?
No, I just need some clarification.
Yeah.
Because I ended with two people.
Yeah.
And I could have two people.
Right, right.
They went up here, maybe that Darcy's seen, they already made their decision. I don't know. No, I'm saying it was posted for January first. There's no hiring of an IT director prior to January first. Correct, and Kathy's clarifying that if an IT director is not hired for January one, then the IT technician does not have a job December, after December.
Right, which, which Right, which the easy fix of that is to just do a simple amendment and extend it for thirty days till we
Yes, yes, if we have to amend that. She was just looking for clarification. That you're aware that that, if that happens.
Yeah, make sure that, I guess, that, that comes up on our agenda at that meeting if so needed. Motor pool fund.
This is, and this is clarification again, just to update you. That the sheriff's office still has one vehicle that has not been delivered yet. But it's approved for twenty-three's budget. But I don't think they're going to get it.
Well, and by last Friday, and Friday before that, Friday before that, so.
There's only so many Fridays left, you're saying, under Sheriff.
So if it's an unextended purchase of a car in twenty-three, we're going to have to amend twenty-four for that car.
When it comes?
Yeah, when it comes. So and then under Sheriff and Sheriff have your approved motion to go ahead and order more cars, which is already in the twenty-four budget. So that is covered there. So on that vein, it's fifty-two Fridays.
Yeah. Before, before you leave the motor pool fund, there's still ongoing work to revise the allocation expense or there's, that's Okay.
I just wanted to
Oh, sorry.
A few more things.
All right, sorry. Yeah.
So, okay, so we've got one car yet to buy. We still have Amber's three vehicles that will be paid for out of five fifty-two. However, she was just notified by her dealer that they canceled her orders.
Oh, no.
For twenty-three. So, but it's not her, it's not personal, it's not Delma County.
It's across the board.
Right. Four just said, I mean, you're not making more twenty-three's. Is the way I understand it. And her dealer didn't address what's going to happen.
So we don't know if we're going to lose our place in line?
Yes, we're, we have many unknowns. I just found this out Thursday or Friday last week.
It's pretty poor business.
In that vein, Amber also let Administrator Allen and we know that the patrol car that we allowed her to lease, we allowed her to lease from the motor pool, the deposit and heat aren't working. So we swapped them out. And then she, I think it's the two seventeen of the lot. So she's driving the patrol car two seventeen. We also, if you recall, relocated the Deputy Commissioners to the marine truck. And his old truck is sitting out on the lot. So now we don't have three cars coming from police agency, excuse me. We're not auctioning off these cars, which is typical. I guess this is, you know, a notation that
We don't have the revenue.
To move through the Administrator's office. That this adds to the motor pool. So we should be using these vehicles and charging them ten cents or thirty cents. It's ten because they're used. So I'm just updating you with regard to our challenges with the vehicles. So in your packet, I had my account clerk draft up some calculations if you were to up the motor pool per mile from ten and thirty cents. That's ten for anything over eighty thousand miles, thirty cents for anything under. And she, we, we did several different calculations. We can do more. But we did at the top of the page a twenty cent, fifty cent, a twenty-five cent, fifty cent, or a twenty-five cent, sixty cent. And so the bottom right-hand corner, you can see and the money that you could generate if miles were driven as his property to have that. This is based on the first nine months of the year. And then we just repeated the last quarter, which is like pre-winter driving, just to see if we can come up with something. So it jumps from where we calculate now at about a hundred and two thousand dollars in mileage revenue. Up, I think twenty-five, sixty's pretty high. That's two hundred and thirteen thousand. I think that's too much. But I think it landed somewhere in between and the seventy-six to a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And that would be a twenty-eight, fifty.
That's what I
Twenty-five, fifty?
I like the twenty-five, fifty. Not too high?
No, from my review, that's, that's where I landed when I looked at these numbers as a twenty-five, fifty is. You know, and they can, we can do that for a year and see where we end up and review it again. But obviously what we have is nowhere near a workable amount as it is. So something actually has to be taken.
Yeah, and I looked at the budget line items for mileage in all categories where we charge fees to departments. And through October, all departments were running under seventy percent. So I think that they could use any, I mean, using their budget numbers that we laid in for twenty-four, I think we could do it. Secondary road is the only one, but that's secondary road. They're driving secondary roads.
Under Sheriff Peel, do you have any comment on this? Because it's probably going to impact you more than
No, I mean, in the grand scheme, it's sure money.
Right.
I can speak to that, Jim. Those are in your contracts, those are by the IRS allowable. So that doesn't have anything to do with the vehicle that gets charged on that rental. We charge that because, yeah, we don't charge them for gas and oil. Right, it's a, it's a set amount IRS allowable, which includes the vehicle and maintenance and gas.
They're not part of the motor pool to begin with.
They're part of the motor pool when we go to purchase it, but we get that revenue back in the sense that we're charging them more than our thirty cents.
Okay.
I mean, it's not going to change the
No, I would expect not. So then would, would we be making a budget adjustment to all those line items? We adopt this for twenty twenty-four? This is
I think that by the fact that they're running twenty, or about seventy percent extended and has October thirtieth, I'm, Jim, do you think we'd have to amend twenty-four because?
I would say you'd probably look at it as, when you get to audit, or when you get to budget.
Yeah, take a look.
Take a look to see how they're running. But most of their miles, correct, Jim, are in the summer. So you, I mean
I would think it's higher in the summer.
May to September.
I wouldn't tell you that the seasonal difference.
Yeah.
Probably slightly lower than
So I think after you have a good six months, we can, you can look at
You would just change your allocation amount immediately starting in the new year and look at the budgets later on if we need to. Do we need to, do you need a motion to recommend that to the executive?
Yes. Yeah, this starts to come out. Not changing the cost allocation, you will.
Does someone want to make that motion for the twenty-five, fifty cent? If that's a pleasure of this
I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners to change the motor pool calculations to a twenty-five, fifty? You said fifty? Twenty-five, fifty.
Yeah. Yeah, that's
Yeah, that was the hundred and eighty-five thousand.
And is that, that you, that, that seemed to be where you thought we should land for now?
That's where I thought, about a hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I can advise.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Aye? Opposed, the same?
Maybe just start twenty-four then.
Yeah, Jan one, Jan one, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, that's what I have.
Three zero. Thank you.
And then because we have one vehicle sitting out on the lot that is not really operational in the winter, is it the board's desire to just re-terry and get ready for auction asses? Or do we want to repair it?
Is that the drain commissioner's own vehicle?
It would be the
Oh, the no heat, no. Oh, so therefore
Because right now, we're, we only have one backup vehicle.
What, what year is that vehicle?
That one is a that was a seventeen that has no heat.
I don't know if it was, is that the one that she leased here?
Yes. So is it a heater car or is it a fuse?
It is, it kind of leaned toward electrical.
Electrical.
Is what the preliminary mechanical
Because, you know, with the, with the short of, that's a, that's a pretty new vehicle. And considering where we've been, kind of trending with begging and borrowing and stealing cars off our lot, is it worth getting an estimate to get it fixed? And see if that, to just keep it for a year or two in case we need?
Well, and then looking at your motor pool budget, I don't think we'd repair vehicles out of here.
Yeah, usually if it comes across from the sheriff, it's an as-is. But I did mention to Kathy, if you want to, as a board, you could repair that. Or like you said, get an estimate, she could bring it back to you at a future meeting. And if you decide to repair it, you could do that on the motor pool. And then it stays there and you decide, are you going to keep it? And we amend it, another county department needs it or sell it, you know, as-is. I mean, I know sometimes, haven't we, Jim, sold them as-is? Like if they had an issue or something? I think, yeah, I think if there's something wrong with it, you know, you sell it as-is. Or in this case, if you want to keep it as part of your fleet. That's kind of what Kathy's looking for. Do you want her to get an estimate?
Well, let's start with the estimate, I think, is the first step. I mean, if it's, I mean, it's, some of these repairs, you're never going to recoup when you get them, depending how, how expensive it is. But let's look and see what the dollar is and go from there.
And the, these cars that are sitting out there, the sheriff's department doesn't use them as their backup. They have two backup vehicles. So they have their own two that they use for rotation when one's out for repair or oil change or whatever. So this is just our help, our being a assistive safety right now.
Yep.
And then looking forward to twenty-five, the drainage, probably for a truck.
Yep.
Is it the consensus to get an estimate and decide whether to move forward?
I definitely would.
Do you have further direction on that?
I've looked at what they're getting for used vehicles. And if it's an easy repair, we're in the money.
Yeah.
And maybe we'll have an answer on Amber's order. We're going to have that.
Okay.
This is just such an information as we maybe we'll have something additional to get to.
Anything further on the motor pool, Kathy?
No.
Capital outlight overview. And we've received this, I assume everyone's reviewed it. I don't know how much because this is really a full board issue, right? So
I just wanted to raise your attention so that if we all discuss between what we're in Sean and Administrator Allen and I and John, you know, the budget process, workshops, picking these things up, that we didn't drop anything. I, just looking at a few of these things, we still have an outstanding bill on the HVAC phase two, three. And I'm not sure if that's going to appear. We put one in the four seventy to cover that. So that's kind of a question mark. But it's money that we committed in the twenty-three budget. It'll move forward because it's part of the four seventy.
Right.
I think environmental health buildup, the health department did bring in their money. Their hundred thousand came, so, but you're committed to it. It's, it's budgeted, so you're committed. No, Dan, you made a motion that when our things go out, you're committed to funding that up to sixty-six thousand, six hundred at this time. So you're, you're committed. Broadband, I understand that we may be getting an update on the underserved. So that's still a marker, you know, we just still want to keep that front of our eyes. We've put out the money for the boat, the Great Lake Patrol Boat. The sheriff expecting the penal reimbursement. And then I keep updating the statutory commitment on the drains because we keep paying bills right now for G E I on the general fund. So if they were all to become a drain, January first of twenty-three, four, we would have a net outlay of eighty-five thousand. That just nets it out. And then looking at the projects down below that you were talking about, twenty-three and twenty-four. We've gone ahead and we've cut the checks for the jail dishwasher, the telephony recorder, because we were assured those would come in in twenty-three. Installed and done. And then I just made the list of the things that the pool board will be discussing. But I just wanted to give you something, a working document to hang out to.
Thank you very much. It's very, very complete. I appreciate the work that went into this, so.
Wanted to raise a question about the drainage districts because I heard from one road commissioner, and it was just one, but they'd had some discussion. And I understand that we can ask them, John, you were there. We can ask them to share in the cost, but we, we have no authority to make it happen. And I don't know where we are on that, but if we're counting on that, I see that's about fifty thousand dollars on this list that we want the road commission to pay us. If we're not receiving it, at some point we need to
We need to know that.
Right.
Yeah, and then either way, my understanding was we could bill them. The kicker in all this is their taxpayer money too. So whether it's road commission taxpayer money or our taxpayer money, we're taxpayer money paying for private roads.
And if you'll allow me to, I'll go back in my notes on the first drain district that we established, or the road drainage district established. I think that it was statutory because it's how the road commission participates in the drainage district. And I can get that document from Mr. Sensi. Because I rely on that to make sure. And I know, I responded to Trevor, John, that the board, the drainage commissioner is in communication and Ryan Sensi is in communication with the road commission, that they are aware and that they have agreed to participate. So if you'll allow me to go back to my notes, I will scan that then and I'll hand it to you so that you can see where that comes from.
Could we ask, John, did I hear that correctly though, John? You were in that meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be helpful to
Well, let's, let's kind of dab on this and I'll show you what I relied on and we'll go from there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But thank you so much. This is very helpful to have it all rounded up in one slide. That's it. And we're, and we're not moving forward on this till we, we're still waiting on this final piece of information on the
And I got a piece of it this morning at quarter of seven.
Yeah.
And, but Chris wants to wait till the end of the week to confirm some numbers. So by the end of this week, we should have our, our estimate for, or our, our cost from charter. charter.
Okay. And then that's the last piece. I think we're waiting on to be able to dissect our, our capital improvement project, right? That I'm aware of. Okay. ARPA fund update? Anything further on the capital outs before, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's to Jerry. I just wanted to give you an updated ARPA funds balance, so you have the interest to date, current value on that, how much funds. And it's just an update. Because we're, we're totally waiting on this broadband project.
Right.
So that's, that's something that I just want to keep you updated.
Speaking of the ARPA dollars, I had, I had asked the question last month about when we are looking at 2% grant allocations and, and asking for money for housing, that we had given money to, ARPA money to, I thought it was Habitat. I was told, no, we didn't. Well, we, we gave money to Homestretch. So we had given $125,000 for housing, but it was Homestretch and not Habitat. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Sure. So the next item is the housing. And I think, John, you, you wanted to have some input on this, if I remember from early on, this, or had you already had done as well?
Pretty much, just with the, during the discussion, most of the distribution, I'm not sure of those funds, but I would be frank that our journey is an alternative. And so this is actually the best desire of the board.
My, my understanding is this is housing money that has to be spent on housing in some way. And Trudy and John are, are, have found a way for the land bank to take this money out of this housing account that's restricted money. And then using the land bank, able to support a nonprofit like Habitat for, for housing in the county. And I'm all over that. I think that'd be, it doesn't do any good just sitting in this restricted account.
Nope.
And I, I'd like, I would recommend that, John, make that recommendation to the full board.
Kathy?
Well, I, I wanted you to see Trudy's document. She submitted this to us before on her final date last week. And it does talk about program income and non-program income. And what is available for the board to decide at its discretion what to do. And it's, it's an informational piece for you. I agree with John, but it is a board decision what to do with those dollars. So this is more informational. I, I have no skin in this game.
Sure.
Trudy wanted to balance herself, and she and John worked on that. And I just wanted you to have it, because the non-program, the non-program income could be available for housing projects. And I think it's Trudy's recommendation, and I just want to convey that too. I have no skin in this.
And this, what this board did when we were anticipating additional ARPA money, and that's where I think some of the confusion came, that we would, we would support Habitat in the next round of ARPA.
Additional housing funds from what we did, right? Yeah, and I'm a big fan of her CDBG program she used to do with, so it's not necessarily new housing, but keeping people in their homes at the same time. And so that's, could be something to look at too.
Any other discussion or on that item? Kathy, anything else?
To keep a loop on with this, maybe your decision.
Question for John, does this have to be done before the end of the year?
Not at all.
So we could bring this to the, to the board in January with a formal recommendation?
I would give the title, give the rest of the land bank board, if there's something to happen.
You, you okay with that?
Sure.
Linda?
Luluna Tower budget update?
Yeah, in regard to Luluna Tower, and I understand from Administrator Alan that it's going to be a 24 project. You've made the down payment to Midway for, to fulfill the contractual arrangement with them, the down payment. In the budget, we have 100,000 dollars contribution from the local unit as a revenue. And I, I need some direction, because I, I have a known here to know Luluna Township for this, because it's part of their contribution. And do you know where we're at? So I know what to do.
I, I do, because I reached out to Matt on Saturday on this, because I, I looked at this. And Matt has, is still waiting legal review for the contract with the township. And as soon as he gets that back, which should be this week, then the supervisor will sign it, and then we can bill.
Okay, so I think my concern is, historically, just recalling what we've gone through, is are they tapping into their ARPA funds?
They are.
So if this is a 23 issue, maybe a sub-recipient agreement, do we not jump since our ARPA funds with Luluna Township? And should we, timing-wise?
It should be coming from that, from their legal, that their, for their finances and their ARPA, that they have a sub-recipient agreement. Is that correct, Treasurer, Amber?
I usually purchase it before the recipient.
But it's us getting it.
And the pass-through, when I distribute, build, acknowledge to the township, I supply that with a acknowledgement.
Yeah. So if that, if John does that for our tax dollars, that means the Luluna Township should be doing that to us to sign, because we're receiving, we're the sub-recipient from them.
We're receiving their money.
So we're receiving their money. And I'm not sure if Matt was aware of that, so that's why Kathy wanted to talk to you guys about it, because it could be, like you said, a contract. But if it's federal dollars and it's 100,000, then they have to show that on their books as an expenditure and us a receipt of. So...
Could John reach out to Denise Dunn, the treasurer, on that piece of it? And he could tell her that the contract is, is coming? But they can at least start the paperwork?
Yeah, and I'm guessing if Matt has a copy of that contract already, maybe John can look it over. And maybe somewhere in that contract, it says we're the sub-recipient. But with ARPA dollars, especially 100,000 from a township, that's a lot of their budget. We just want to make sure that they're following the guidelines from higher, or from the FEDs like we would.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, it's on them.
Administrator Alan has a...
Sorry, Administrator Alan, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, did also confirm that similarly with Homestretch and the dollars that were provided to them, 125,000, we currently have legal constructing that...
Document.
Agreement, so. So it's in the process.
Is, is that a long time thing to get done? I mean, this...
No, I mean, it's, yeah, it's one of the lawyers have time. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty on standard, especially because, I mean, I think one of the things that's probably happening, like with Gold Stoker and anywhere, is everyone's receiving these ARPA dollars. And in fact, and in this realm, you have to have sub-recipient. So all 83 counties are going through sub-recipient agreements, and it's probably just that sort of shit. As long as we have it signed, we had talked with Deb a lot at my audit, yeah, by the end of year if we could. We will have, I know that's not on your list, but I can touch that with John and Kathy. We will have a single audit. That will be an audit that will be procured, procured from them on us. It is very thorough, because it is for every federally awarded dollar. So I believe, is it Brownfield or Lambate that got 500,000? Lambate got 500,000. And then we have our ARPA dollars that we're spending up over. So essentially, we will have, we haven't had a single audit since maybe 2013, 2014, and the standards are much lower. I mean, it was John's first year, and so that, they're very adept. You have to have all your, I mean, I talked to Deb before, all your I's, all your T's crossed, every, every contract, everything, so it's taken care of.
For the Marine was federal issue.
Oh, our Marine grant, so that already threw us up over. That's right. Thank you for clarifying. Sorry.
No worries. Appreciate the info. Anything further on that? Next up, interim finance plan. I think we've kind of hashed our way through that as part of the agenda so far, right?
We kind of have a plan, yeah.
We have a plan and...
I do appreciate the short-term plan, because it helps give clarity. And it'll help us upgrade.
Yeah, and I appreciate all the help flashing out. I mean, what I presented was broad outlines, not granular details, and now we're working to the granular details. And I, I expect the same process on the, and I hope it's very early in the next year that, with that meeting in January, we're starting to hash out the long-term plan and get some clarity on that. And be looking for assistance from everybody in that, in that matter as well, so.
If you're going to this thing, I never knew I'd be sitting here here or later. I guess neither.
Is there anything further on that line item that needs to be discussed at this time? We've already set a tentative meeting date of January 3rd at 2:30 PM, pending MSU's commitment on, which we'll, we'll hear from them shortly, I guess. And if we have to set another meeting date, we can do it at one of our other interim meetings before then. So we're now down to public comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Administrator Alan did ask me to make a comment about charter counts, because that is something that is in our future to bring us into line with a state mandate, a work mandate, a state mandate. I talked with Paul Maxx, and they, they have expressed that this is not a concern to them. They understand we are under transition when we have holes. But they said that this is not something that they'll raise us up for, and it is something that's, at the state level, down, we have no problem uploading our information for our F-65. And this, as long as we're not having an issue there, this is not something that our auditors are excited about.
Okay. So hopefully that, that gets resolved. That gets resolved as part of our long-term plan, and it's, I think, what our, our plan anticipates, so.
Just being transparent with your auditors and just saying, you know, what we're doing with, and I think that's very important. As long as they're kept in price, we're in good condition.
Thank you, Kathy. Anything further at this point? We would move on. Anything, anyone else would like to add at this moment? Any commissioner? Well, we'll get to commissioner comments after public comment. So right now, we'll open up to the five-minute public comment section. Anyone wishing to comment at this point, please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized. Please come forward, identify yourself and... Man, I should be doing that while I have someone.
Good morning, Kathy Dawkins, Luluna Township. Lovely winter day out there. One of my favorite seasons. I'm going to be a broken record on this topic. Two years and seven months ago, on May 11th of 2021, the former Board of Commissioners made a motion and passed it at the executive in the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. At that time, a lot of comments from Mayor Member Patricia Seda, who herself saying we needed to do a study, we needed to research this, and yet she was, and she and other commissioners were overruled. Here we are, still dealing with the outreach of that, the fallout, I'm sorry, is the proper word, the fallout from that poor decision that has cost this county money, time, and energy. I'd never have been able to understand why that motion was made and passed, but it doesn't matter, it's where we are now. I'm, I'm glad to see that this current board is dealing with this issue in a professional manner. It appears that even some of the commissioners who voted for that may now realize that there was wasted time because of it, that things should have been dealt with properly since May of 2021. Another issue that I want, in the fact that we're still, I mean, you don't even have the positions out there yet. And you've had somebody who came in this fall, telling you, this agency, I believe, is it, telling you that we may or may not get somebody in the next year, because what we're asking for, what we needed, what we had, is some of the experienced and governmental entities along with the finance that met with it. Okay. The other thing that I want to talk about is in job descriptions that I, that are presently out there, one of them states, under experience, the ability to establish effective working relationships and to interact professionally, constructively, and diplomatically with top-level administrators, other employees, both union and non-union, elected officials, and any other representatives of the business. Another one of these job postings states interpersonal skills necessary to work courteously and effectively with other employees in the public. Ability to maintain the confidentiality of inform, information and professional boundaries. I think it's wonderful that we're asking that out of our employees. What I'd like to do is ask that same thing out of our board of commissioners. I don't know if you can do a, nobody can force you to do this, to have these same abilities and behavior, positive behavior qualifications. It's just like, we seem to be doing really well, and then something comes up where there is conflict again on the board, and it, it saddens me. We have a wonderful county, we have done wonderful things with our fiscal responsibility. And I hate to see the chaos and infighting coming out again. So my charge to the Board of Commissioners is please try to keep things on a positive level, cooperate with each other, and let's do what we should be doing for our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? If being none, we'll move on to commissioner comments.
I wanted to thank Kathy for the organization for today.
Yeah.
Jen and Michelle and Kathy and the whole team for getting us where we are.
Yeah, agreed. I think I, I stated that earlier. Thanks, I was, I was absent for a little bit, so appreciate all the help on getting the things together that I should have been doing and didn't. So thank you. Any other? If there are no other commissioner comments, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
A move.